Good evening, everyone. Welcome to council meeting. If you'll please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Lord, we ask you to preside over our meeting and our labors and to bless all of our endeavors. Help us to build a community united in harmony of love and service. Watch over our families at home, at work, and at school. We thank you, Lord, for everything it widens our knowledge and equips us more fully to the task of life and loved living. Give us the knowledge and prudence which will enable us to live our lives well. Teach us to know our own weaknesses that we may ever be on our guard against them. Teach us to know our own strengths that we may use to the fullest the gifts and talents which you have given us. Help us to share in loving concern for each other at all times. Above all, Lord, help us to really know you, for it is the beginning and the end of all wisdom. This is eternal life. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the February, March 7th, I'm sorry, meeting. Well, roll call.
Mrs. Lingo.
Here.
Mr. Parsons.
Here.
Mr. Redding.
Here.
Mrs. Dosa. Mr. George.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Rissel.
Here.
Okay, Ms. Dosa is absent. If there's anybody here I'd like to excuse.
Make a motion to excuse Mrs. Dosa.
Mr. George has made a motion to excuse. Second by Mr. Redding. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, minutes from our February 21st meeting. You have an updated copy that was on your desk. When you came in this evening. What was highlighted is the only difference.
Yeah, the, it really wasn't, I guess, special meeting notice or special meeting minutes. It was really a work session, correct?
Work session, minutes.
Minutes, yes. Is that correct? Right?
That's correct.
So I don't want people thinking that we had like back-to-back me, you know, special council meeting to prove something. It was a work session following the council meeting. If that's all right with everybody, can we change that to work session?
I have one thing on page three. City manager's report. In the third paragraph, the big one. Starting with the rewritten and then, once approved by council, has to get certified by, that should be the county auditor.
I'm missing that, Bob. Where was that at?
Two, three.
About five lines, six lines up from the bottom of Mr. Bauer's report, on the far right end.
Okay, so you're taking out council and putting county auditor in?
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that they've seen? If not, I would ask for a motion to adopt the print as corrected.
Make a motion to adopt the minutes as corrected.
Okay, Ms. Lingo has made a motion to adopt as corrected. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Redding? Roll call. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Correspondents, does anybody have any correspondence that they have to bring before council?
Yeah, the, last week, Dr. Belinda Tubbs Wallace sent us all an email. All the elected officials, and she was concerned about the four parking spots on Compton near Perry that were eliminated temporarily. So I don't know who she is. Apparently, she said they didn't get any notice. They should have had a chance to come and, and speak their piece and have some say in whether we did that. And I sent the email to the city manager. He didn't get it. And apparently, we did notify everybody on Compton that we were going to be discussing that at the meeting. All the businesses.
Yep, yep.
I, I, yeah. Any information regarding the non-residence estate that's also listed under their business? It goes through their website as well?
Are you Dr. Wallace?
Yes, sir.
We'll have a public input in just a couple of minutes and you can speak to us. Oh, thank you. And the city manager called, Ms. Wallace, Dr. Wallace, and told her it was temporary. But it could be permanent.
Not official. We were, put it up for 30 days and potentially, we could extend it for another 30 days, just depending.
Or it could be permanent.
Or it could be permanent, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That's the email that we received and follow-up to that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Anybody else? Correspondents? I have, okay. Guests and special events, really none, right? Public input. Anybody who would like to address council, do you have you put up your hand, be recognized, or I can just go through the list here? Pete Alexander, come on up to the podium here, Pete, and give us your name and address. Even though we have it, we still have to do it for.
Pete Alexander, I own the building at 1590 Compton Road. Formerly like the Hilltop Glass Building. Anyway, you know, I owned it, I bought it in 2019, and I did hear about the parking reduction, but I didn't really get notice of it, so that's fine, and I don't quite understand the whole scope. But I will say, it does not appeal to me because I do have, you know, five residents in that building, plus three store owners, and they're very busy, and they, the on-street parking is very convenient and really helps out a lot for me, too, when I, if I'm like doing work at the apartment. The entrance is on Compton Road, the storefronts, their entrances are at Compton Road. So that on-street parking is really valuable to me and my business owning that building and my tenants. So just kind of wanted to state that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming up. Pastor Andre Whaley.
Good evening, city council, as well as the wonderful city. Grateful just to be able to address some of our concerns. Just to piggyback off of the same thing, I think, Mr. Pete, is that right? So I am a pastor at 1585 Compton Road, which is Emmanuel Temple Apostolic Church. Also, I'm actually also a resident in the parsonage. We know that ever since the lights have been taken away, it has caused multiple accidents and the danger of it, which is a very big concern of myself as a resident, but also as a pastor as well. One of the things that we did, I did not get the notice, but I'm not sure if, maybe I'll look and see if one of our secretaries got the notice or anything. But what I wanted to address for the council and those that are here is to state the fact that it does affect us tremendously as well with those four parking spots away. And one of the reasons why, I actually brought some of, some of our members, we have senior members, who unfortunately making the building handicap accessible. They park in that front, or it makes it very challenging to get them in the building safely, as well as having accessibility, having them park in the back with the wheelchairs, and some of them are on walkers. It has been, it has been tremendous difficulties making sure of their safety. So I just wanted to address that to the city council. It is a concern of mine as a pastor, but it's also a concern of mine as well as a resident, that we can try to figure out something that'll be safe in that intersection as well. But if we can at least consider that idea of us having that business there in front, which is a church, and our seniors, I want to make sure to be advocate, to stand for them as well.
Okay, Pastor, thank you very much. We talked about a lot of different things over this, how to handle this accident problem and safety. And we thought we'd come up with a solution temporarily to try to see what works. Apparently, we bit a hog in the heiny, so, you know, just bear with us. Okay, Frank and Sharon, I don't, can't read your last name, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
The reason we decided to come up today is.
Need your address.
1469 Southampton Court.
Okay, thank you.
The reason we decided to show today is about the streets. Seward Avenue, Evencrest, Southampton. I've been a resident of Mount Hailty for 27 years. Those streets have not been touched in 27 years. I called the other day about potholes in the streets, all the way from the intersection of Seward to Evencrest, from Evencrest to the cul-de-sac on Southampton. You guys come out every three months or so and fill in the potholes with asphalt. That lasts about two weeks, and then the potholes reappear. When are we done and release the monies to pave these streets?
I'll have to let the administration handle that.
Your street is on the list. We have a list, prioritized list.
For the past 20 years.
Is that right? And I've been on your street recently, and I understand your concern there. And we do one street or half a street every year. I mean, it might be half of Compton, it might be half of Perry, it might be half of, Hamilton was a different story, since that's a state highway. But we only have the funds to do one street per year.
Understood, being a small village, a small city, I understand the budget. But, yeah, you know, you go out and you buy a new vehicle. The alignment, the suspension, everything gets knocked out the first year you have it because of the roads. And these potholes appear overnight, especially when winter weather comes along. And I've called numerous times to the public works and spoken to them about it. They do, they are good, and they get people out there to fill in the potholes, but like I said, they don't last. Two weeks at the most. And then one other thing. I've, I've spoken with Justin, with Mr. Westerich, referenced the snow plowing. I'm at the 11 o'clock on the cul-de-sac in Southampton, and every year, well, not every year, but whenever we have a heavy snow, all the snow ends up in my driveway, and I gotta dig myself out of there. Well, this time, I stopped the snowplow driver, this was about, what, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, we had the last big snow. And I asked him not to push it up against my driveway. I showed him a no parking area on the right side of the cul-de-sac and asked him if he could push it over there. Well, he insisted on pushing it into my driveway. As I was questioning him, he, he became argumentative with me. Well, where do you want me to put it? What do you want me to do with it? I said, "Over there would be nice, and not in a driveway. Nobody parks over there because that's a no parking area." Well, he left a three-foot pile blocking half of my driveway. Took me about an hour to dig out of it myself. And that's when I called you and complained about it. You told me that you would speak to him and see if you could come up, devise a plan as some other area where the snow may be pushed. All right. Really, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, we thank you for coming up, and I understand about the snow. That's frustrating.
The street is frustrating, too, and I understand that.
Very frustrating.
We are trying to get, I know, we have so many streets that are like yours, and we're trying to get all of them, but it just takes time, sir.
All right. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Linda Wal, Walif? Wallace. Give us your name and address, please.
Belinda Wallace, 1580 Compton Avenue.
Thank you.
So again, I did speak with Mr. Bauer about, I just want to go over my notes that I put down. So as a business owner here in Mount Hailty, we also own Bo's Barber Shop. Just felt not considered, not a note on the door, and we all know this is a very, you know, small neighborhood. A note could have came to the door, let alone a phone call. Feeling disregarded, no input. And I'm sure that other communities have lights and have issues that we are experiencing. So not sure how in-depth the research was in terms of looking at how we can raise dollars to do whatever we need to do to maintain the lights. I understand from Mr. Bauer's that a study was done in 2020. And as you guys know, I could just guess, I could be wrong, but the increase in influx of new residents and businesses in Mount Hailty has increased at a minimum of 25 percent. I'm just saying at a minimum. Just as you make the L shape going up to Hamilton Avenue to Newt and making a right, which means that all the businesses already from 7,600 going down to the library have to share, along with Hilltop Glass, the parking garage in the back, along with those residents on the front of, on the front of Compton. So when we do the study, I think it's very important that you have the people involved. And sometime when you don't have that diversity perspective, we have to start over or redo unless we're just, unless we planned in the beginning to disregard or dishonor all that are involved. So not only is it affected handicap parking, the businesses that have deliveries that must park there to try to even get their deliveries is a problem. Mr. Bauer also mentioned to me that perhaps we could minimize those parking spaces. But I'm thinking to go from lights to no light due to dollars and sacrifice small businesses, black owners, minority businesses, period, that are just now thriving is, is close to ludicrous if we're just putting dollars in the place of safety. I want to also mention that, again, study from lights to no lights. And I understand that it's dollars, not a stop sign, just, just no regard. But please examine the costs. Where else can we gather the dollars, the funds to operate lights? Consider the handicap, the danger and inconvenience of people having to walk to the parking lot all the way around the block, whether they go around to Bo's Barber Shop, or whether they go in between the, what is it, the Natures, Healthy.
Native Moon.
Native Moons, that, that's very dangerous for elderly people. Our new tenant, where they're coming from, the parking lot they have, she has a handicap sticker in a parking space because where she lives now, there's a long distance to the apartment. So was hoping to get a physician statement from her doctor so that she can have the whole handicap sign permitted. It looks like it's three, but it's really four, because we all know that right now, from the corner, there's no parking on either side. So that's already one space gone. So just want you guys to really consider that. Everybody's concerned about the safety. We're all concerned about the safety, and we know the number one way to be safe is with a light. So what does that mean? Dollars. So what are other communities doing to obtain dollars or do what they have to do so that businesses are not sacrificed? Also, the choices, the choice that we made is a very easy fix. No communication, just, let's just, just, just do this. So again, my plea today is that we do hear the voices, hear other perspectives on how we can have, conduct a study that's going to consider all, where we all can benefit. Different there? And I, and I see, I mean, we, we don't have a lot of diversity on our council to have the perspective of others. So it's going to be very important that we go reach out so we can have that diversity perspective in terms of from hairstyles to photography, even on the things that some of the Gen Z are doing today. And we can then relate to how many customers they have, looking at the different businesses. So I am very concerned that going forward, what else are we going to look at? Are we going to look at more of the same? Yes, there's definitely going to be a decrease because of not having that, but what else can we do? So going further with the study, I'm just asking that we have some input as to what all we need to examine as we look at the study to get a true outcome on how we could benefit our community, keep our businesses thriving, as well as the people safe. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Any comments? Okay. Vicky and David Starwurf.
Hello, everybody.
You know your name? Can you give us your name and address?
Yeah, I'm Vicky Starwurf, 1590 Adams Road, right behind United Dairy Farmers. I'm not a good public speaker, and I get emotional. So anyway, I'm going to backtrack just a little bit, just to give you all a history of what's been going on. In July of 2019, my 2017 Chevy Cruze got hit in our private drive. This is our only place we can park at, is back there. And then, on February 22nd of 2023, my 2017 Chevy got hit again at 2:42 a.m. in our private drive, and this time, it was totaled. It's on the film from United Dairy Farmers. There's a police report. Officer Christopher Jones took everything down. We talked to him again today. We ran into him out here while we were walking. And, and then the first time that it was hit, my car was hit, UDF did put a speed bump in the stop sign in coming down the alley. If you're going, you know, eastbound from the UDF. We came to numerous, you know, a couple council meetings back then to ask for more support, and then there was none. This time, UDF has been responding to our concerns again, and will come out to see how to fix the situation. This guy's name is Ten Kling, and you can call him. He wants to get in contact with the city and see what they can do. We have their phone number. He is the director of the real estate for United Dairy Farmers. This time, we are here again and asking for your support. We have put up barriers on our property to prevent from getting hit, and we are still getting hit. So I got pictures. I'm sure everybody's been down the alley, and they've seen our garbage cans lined up on the lines, and it's like, and we got chairs, we got my attack crab wooden horse out there, too, and, I don't know. You know, the cars are just coming up and down the alley too fast. They're making it a passway to avoid the lights, and we brought this up to the cops. Because they, they, we, we can sit out there, and we sit out there a lot, and you can see that they go right past to dodge from staying at the light. So they're going down through the alley and coming around, and UDF's got two entrances and exits already. They don't need this third one to the private residence, which is us, and the city does own the, the alley. A lot of people think it's a two-lane alley. So I can't tell you how many times I pull into my driveway, and it's like I'm pushed way over into the hedges while they're coming down, and they think they have the right of way, and it's just, you know. So our proposal, a couple more speed bumps in the alley, which we brought up last time.
That's the minimum.
Yeah. And also, what we really, really, really want is to close off that alley and just keep it for the private residents that are in the back and the adult daycare center. I mean, we can, we can try to make the alley one-way, but a good majority of people won't pay attention to that anyway because a lot of them don't do that anyway, so, and one of these days, one of these kids are going to get hit because they do not. He's got, he's got measurements and all that. They don't, you know, the, the kids are walking these cars zoom. We see it all the time. We hear the, the brakes squeal. We hear this. So anybody is more than welcome to come down, sit on our deck, and watch how close these cars go by, and watch how many cut through in and out to get to Hamilton Avenue or Adams. It's silly, because they go down the alley and turn right onto Adams when they got an outlet right there at Adams to get out. So. You have to make notes so I don't forget anything. We're not too sure what more to do. It's a pain in the, in the rear to keep moving those barriers back and forth. And yes, we do have a garage that's not attached, but only one car can fit in it, and it is cleaned out. So, you know, we normally aren't the ones to complain. We deal with whatever is dealt with us. But getting hit two times in less than five years, and, and by the way, I only had two payments left of my car. So something has to be done, because we're getting fed up. And what would you guys do if this were to happen to you?
I'd be up here complaining. Yeah, absolutely.
So we're just hoping between UDF and the city, we can prevent any of this happening again. And I don't know what more you're going to say.
Yeah, the, you know, we talked to UDF and, and they used to, I mean, this was their second building. We've been residents on that alley 43 years, and with the old building. And, um, with the old building, we looked at their back wall. We had some, some entertainment there with people using that as a restroom, but that was nothing compared to what we're putting up today. And at that time, it was a business, a thriving business with no, no access to the alley. And, um, this time, we understand when they were building it, there was something wrong where they put the utility pole and, and the guy I talked to today, or yesterday, he's, he had it up on Google Maps or whatever. And, and even when they built the place, the new building, um, they were concerned that the alley's narrow. And then he was, he was also saying, well, that sidewalk, I have measurements. I think the alley is fifteen foot, three inches. I measured my car. My truck, if you put trucks side by side, there's no way that should be a two-way alley. It's not wide enough. Uh, two trucks cannot fit side by side there. Um, the little ramp border thing where people, where pedestrians are supposed to walk, it's only fifteen inches. I'm wider than fifteen inches in a couple of different places. So, um, there's, there's a problem with the design that should be cut off. It, that's, that's our, that's what we want. But, um, their other thing, it has a no outlet sign at the beginning of it or at, by, um, the Adams Road, um, entrance to it. It's only twenty-three inches high. I measured the one on Perry Street. It's like seven feet high. So that, that no outlet sign needs to be corrected. Um, UDF is talking about putting up signs. This is not a throughway. Um, people was, especially during the morning and, and, um, usually you would think it'd be an afternoon, um, um, drive time, but it's actually when school lets out and all the buses are backed up on Adams Road and Hamilton Avenue. That's when most people cut through. They come from either Hamilton Avenue. Don't stop at UDF, come straight through and go out on, on Adams. Or, and then, um, or otherwise they come up Adams and go out on Hamilton Avenue. Sometimes they come at the same time, both in a hurry, sometimes with cell phones in their hands and kids in the alley. That's very dangerous. So the last time I was up here, I was concerned about the children walking on the alley and one of them may get hit. So far, that hasn't happened, but in five years, our car got hit twice. So please help.
Thank you, Dave.
Is, is the alley, does the alley go around the building and out on Hamilton?
No.
No.
No, it just goes one way. Okay. Just goes from Adams?
Residents in the back and we got adult daycare center.
Okay. Thank you.
Does Rumpke use the alley to access the garbage?
For their dumpsters, no.
They don't?
Their delivery trucks are, are, um, even, you know, the Fritos trucks and things like that. They have been told not to use the alley. The only truck that has been using it is one of UDF's delivery trucks, the short one, not the long one. Um, their tankers, you know, the big long tankers that put the gas in, they don't use the alley. They, they don't need to. And the tight, the turn is too tight anyway for the trucks. So it's, no.
So if we talk to them and they're okay with closing the alley, that
Well, you know, it's
Makes sense.
Even if they would do it temporarily and see how much it hurts their business, I don't think it's going to hurt it, but
Yeah, it's not a twenty-four hour one.
I was most worried about the garbage because dumpsters are right back there.
No, they, no, they, they come at five o'clock every morning. Believe me, I know them. And, um, no, they, they don't even, they're, they're fine, but they're, they know how to drive, so.
Mr. Bauer, do you have the phone number for the United, UDF?
I do not. What, I don't think I have the contact. Let me
Mayor, the only problem with making that a one-way alley is they have to go in and out both ways.
I think if we shut off
Their neighbor has to go out both ways.
We shut off the entrance to
To UDF.
To UDF, then we don't have to worry about that issue because the only people using it will be the residents.
What about people that cut through?
Adult daycare.
They wouldn't be able to cut through anymore.
Trying to visualize it.
No, so the cut through is simply through UDF's parking lot. So if there's no access from UDF to the alley,
We'll do what, see what we can do.
Yeah.
Kind of like we did
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Vicky.
Yep.
Vicky.
Okay, one more. Aaron Horsley.
Aaron Horsley, seventy-three twenty-eight Maple Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I just wanted to give a few quick updates on the park, um, Forest Avenue Wetlands Park. Um, our invasive removal on Saturday was a big success. Uh, we had sixteen volunteers show up and we were able to, um, get to about ninety-five percent completion on the, uh, removal. So we just have a little bit of a section in the back, um, some larger plants and then some stuff that's mixed in with vines. Uh, once we get through that, the, um, entire front of the park will have the honeysuckle removed. Um, from there, we'll work on, uh, tree planting in the early spring and then take steps to start, um, planting native plants to replace the honeysuckle. Then also wanted to give a few notes on our trail extension that we're also working on. It now extends to the parking lot on the far right side. Uh, when it's completed, it will run from there, go through the new area that we've just recently opened up, and will connect with the right side trail. Um, currently, the trails total about one point one miles. This should add point one or point two to the trail. Also, I've been working with, uh, Scout, uh, Scott Bauer and, uh, Great Parks with getting a job shadowing program done. Um, this job shadow will give me, um, continued education on how to maintain these trails and how to build them properly and put them in, in places that they won't be at risk of, you know, erosion or interfering with wildlife trails or anything like that. Um, so I'm waiting to hear back from Great Parks. As soon as I have any updates on that, I'll let you know as well.
Thank you, Aaron.
Anybody have a question for Aaron?
Thank you. Thanks, Aaron.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work. Yes, Jim.
Good evening. Uh, Jim Lowenberg, fourteen eighteen St. Clair Avenue. And it sounds like a solution may be underway for two issues tonight. One is you could take the cones from over here and put them down at UDF and maybe that would solve some of that. So. Uh, I actually wanted to, just a, a comment about the alley or about, uh, Compton and Perry. Um, I was not able to stay around when you had the work session a few weeks ago because you had an executive session, which, uh, went, went for a while. Um, it seems to me the issue, as I'm trying to cross Compton Road, is not in, and, and there are some issues around visibility, but the bigger issue is the speed of cars. And by putting the cones there and removing, uh, the, those parking spaces, it's actually encouraging cars to drive faster instead of slower. So I think it actually doesn't necessarily help the problem. It's, uh, it's increasing the speed. Uh, traffic calming is the term that was, is often used to try to get cars to slow down. And by having barriers there, whether, whether it's a car or narrowing of the streets, is what seems to, to slow cars down. And that would make, that would reduce the number of accidents. So I would suggest that you look at street calming options. There's, there's all kinds of things that are used all over the city, uh, of, the city of Cincinnati and, and other places for street calming. So I would suggest you do things like that to try to slow down traffic and hopefully that would reduce accidents. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Interesting idea. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. Um, Dan Oliver, uh, eighty twenty-one Hamilton Avenue. Former stadium. It's no longer the stadium anymore. Um, closed down December. I think I spoke to you guys at the time. Um, we opened back up at Suite thirty-one Restaurant and Lounge, April eighth. Um, things, a few things have changed. So before we had the stadium, we know there's a lot of standing room, things like that. That's no longer, um, the issue is more of an upscale restaurant now. So we have wine. It's more of a, uh, Jay Alexander Cooper's Hall, me and you now, um, in the restaurant. Uh, sitting room only unless you're outside on the patio, stand up out there. Um, and I know, you know, we, I, I changed it because, you know, we had a lot of issues with the stadium, crowd it was bringing, and I didn't want that environment. Not from a business, all the, the, uh, community. So shut down, been shut down for, shoot, for, but it's going to be four months when we open back up. So, um, one of the issues we had was we had an objection by the council when we were trying to transfer the liquor licenses over to the stadium. But after I told you guys, we closed it. So we talked about you guys withdrawing that objection, um, with the new restaurant opening up, um, being more of a restaurant, upscale type of, you know, feel. No standing room, sitting room only. So, um, I wanted to see if that, if it was still the direction the council was going, um, with the withdrawal, so we can get the transfer completed and over with. Um, or, you know, what's you guys' stance on it? I know Scott, you had a lot to do with that, so.
Yeah, I don't think a date has even been decided yet for the objection. Um, I mean, since it's been closed, obviously there's been no problems. Uh, but, I mean, I guess we'd wait for it to reopen and see if there were the same issues. I don't know if you know, uh, Chief Demossi retired at the end of last year.
I do know.
Our, uh, our new chief will start in the next couple of weeks here. Um, so I know he'll be interested in looking at it and checking it out. Um, I mean, I know one of the things we wanted to look at was just kind of the plan that you would have to keep the types of people that were coming around and causing the issues, um, what you would do to keep them out.
Well, we, uh, well, the, the biggest thing was is that we had, it was the age. So basically what I did was is that, so it's a restaurant lounge. So during the restaurant hours, um, it's four to nine, um, Monday through Thursday. And then after nine o'clock is the lounge hours, but we don't stay open as we used to anymore. So, uh, the only two days we even stay, we're not even staying until two-thirty anymore. So, um, Fridays and Saturdays, we still went to two. Uh, but the age limit is thirty-five and up. So we're no longer dealing with, I don't even want to do, I, it's no, it's no controlling the, the young people. I mean, you can't control, you can't, so we're going thirty-five and up after nine o'clock. Um, and we're not playing any rap music anymore. So the music's more of a, um, you know, mellow, you know, lounge counter feel when you're in there eating and stuff like that. Um, also, uh, like I said, we changed the menu up, so it was more of an upscale vibe in there. So it just, we just got rid of a lot of, you know, um, the things that we had because I don't even want to cater to. My, 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 my peace of mind is I can't deal with it. So, um, that's no longer an issue. So the people that we had coming in won't be there. We're not staying open that late. Um, during the week, on Sundays and Mondays, we close at twelve. On Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays, we're closing at one. So we're not staying open that late. I did some studies and typically when somebody comes to your bar after one o'clock, typically they're already intoxicated. So, you know, all you're doing is furthering the issue. So now, so now, you know, it's just easier. Like you come, you know, have some food, eat and drink and then that's it. So this is different for you. Just, I want to change some things up. So. The hours be posted. Um, next meeting, I'm making sure you get, get guys the, uh, menu. Um, the chef, uh, the former chef from Cooper's Hall is the one who did our, I knew menu, so.
Yeah, sounds like good ideas. April eighth is what you said?
Mm-hmm, April eighth.
Opening, okay. Yeah, I mean, definitely get with the new chief and, uh, sit down and kind of, we can talk through it.
Okay.
See what happens, yeah.
Cool. Any questions?
No, but it sounds, sounds great. Sounds like you're really working hard to, to change it.
Yeah, I did, I did a lot to change it all, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I hope, hope things are better, but we'll have to have a few months of experience to see
Right, and I understand that, yeah.
Before we can even address the issue of the license.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cool, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anybody else here to address council? All right. Well, we sure thank you for coming up with your concerns. The intersection of Perry and Compton has been a great concern to us also. Uh, it just, the state did this survey and they counted cars and we didn't reach the number that they wanted. So they basically took away our traffic lights. So, uh, that's why we lost most of them up and down Compton Road. So, uh, we'll just have to figure out what we can do and how to handle it. And, uh, your input's very helpful in helping us make a decision. And, uh, you, you know a lot of us personally, so stay in contact with you. You have our phone numbers at home, I'm sure. Yes, sir.
The suggestion on, uh, Reddick Road, they've now put these, I don't know if you know where Reddick Road is. They got those black, they're like rubber speed bumps.
Speed bumps, yeah.
Up and down Reddick Road. I mean, I made the suggestion. All of them down Reddick Road. And they, I, I couldn't believe it, but they just all of them down Reddick Road, maybe like that. And you don't have to put a lot of them because Compton's not that long, so it's going to make people slow down.
We're going to have to consider something like that. Yes, sir.
What part of Reddick Road is that?
Um, they had them all the way from Rosemont all the way up to Rabbit.
Do you know where Seymour and Reddick is? You just keep going down, um, Reddick Road, uh, eastward to the south.
South.
South. If you keep going south, you'll see them because you have to slow down. You have to.
They're on Clifton Avenue too.
Yeah, they're, they have some override on Niagara Drive over here in Springfield Township. So.
Uh, you can't.
This one's on Niagara Portable. They can remove them. But like if you go down downtown Cincinnati, like in Hyde Park, that area, they actually have pavement ones that are, you know, ten feet wide and they're adjusted to
Well, that's quite different than what they had there in Eastland.
Yeah, not in my truck you can't. The tools bounce out. Okay. Moving on. Mayor's report. Mr. Wolf.
Yes, so as you got some foreshadowing from Scott, we hired our, um, new police chief. And I will let him give you more details about that, uh, when he gets to his report. Uh, we also are going to have another change in staff. Our current magistrate, who's been with us for a while, is our prosecutor and our magistrate, uh, Brian Goodyear, is stepping down, um, after the May eighteenth mayor's court. Um, it has been recommended to me, uh, by Scott Solman, the law director, to appoint Jackie Purcell um, as his replacement. So that is my plan. Um, all that I will need from council is we'll get a motion, um, to you. We'll need a motion to contract with Ms. Purcell at a rate comparable to Mr. Goodyear's rate. So just to approve that. We still have time. It's not till, uh, second week of May, but that is coming up. Um, the HEAL grant update, I mentioned it the last meeting that we applied for it. We'd know by Friday, we did get it, which is great. So the official, uh, amount that we are awarded is eight thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. Aaron's still here. Um, that'll go strictly to the wetlands, um, upgrade. Uh, trail markers, all kinds of supplies, not just for the honeysuckle, but for upgrading that park. And Aaron was really instrumental in getting that done.
Yes, he was. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron.
I appreciate it. So we did get that funding. Um, it's just some paperwork we got to get through to get, to get the money and get moving now. But perfect time to get it was spring and summer coming up. And then, um, just the last update, the C U R C did make an offer, uh, last week on the Brotherton's building and the house behind it, and, um, Gary Perkins accepted their offer. So there is positive movement right now. Um, the C U, or the C I C met and, um, approved the extension and, um, shoot, what was the other thing? We approved
Fiscal agent.
Yes, approved, uh, to have the C I C as the fiscal agent for, um, the C U R C until their nonprofits, their federal status is approved. Uh, so we can get the ball rolling on that and they can start fundraising. So we'll look for some progress there. And then the last thing, um, the CRA Housing Council Planning Commission met today and Planning Commission appointed me to the CRA Housing Council. Now, I need to make two appointments and I need council to make two appointments. And we'd like to have that done at the next meeting. So, um, I don't know if that should fall under a committee or if you all want to discuss it during new business, um, or old business, I guess. It, it can be two of you. It can be two residents you think might be interested, et cetera. Uh, but again, this is the one that'll do the, um, overlook the, uh, tax incentives that we gave Clover Oak Apartments. So that is the, the housing council that we're doing appointments for. And that is it. I will let Scott fill you in on the chief and some other things.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor?
Could you explain the CRA Housing Council?
Yeah, so when we gave them the incentives, uh, for their remodel, uh, so they were, we gave them tax incentives so they don't have to pay as much in taxes. Part of that agreement was we were, that was supposed to have been created years ago. And we learned through this process that it wasn't created. So Scott and I are picking up the ball and making sure that it's created so we can have the appropriate oversight.
Okay, good.
And there's section more to that because we have to have the housing council. Then there is the Tax Review Council. Tax Incentive Review Council.
Correct.
Which will actually require appointments from us, appointments from the county commission, and appointments from the auditor.
The Board of Education.
And the Board of Education. So this is quite the process.
We go find enough people? Okay, moving on then. Um, City Manager's Report, Mr. Bauer.
Yeah, I'll start with the exciting stuff. So new chief.
Yeah, I'll start with the exciting stuff, so new chief, uh, Jerome Ditesheimer, Ditesheimer. Uh, he's been at Mason for twenty-plus years, he was their assistant chief, he accepted last week to become our new chief. Uh, he will be at the next council, March twenty-first. Uh, I think he's gonna come in early, uh, try to meet as many of the officers, um, just anyone else around the city that he can. So, he'll be here, and you guys can kind of meet him. But then, his first day will be the twenty-seventh. And, uh, yeah, he'll hit, hit the road and start doing some of the stuff.
He was assistant chief in Mason?
At Mason, yes. He'd been there for probably twenty, probably close to twenty-five years.
Okay.
Yeah. Real good guy, uh, just got special thanks to Keisha, Paul, Jamie, and we also had Sergeant Fath on the, uh, committee as well. Everyone was super excited about him, he felt like he nailed every part of the process, uh, the interview, the, um, special assessment we had, so it just, we're all really high on him, think he'll do really good things.
Super.
Let's see, fire, well, I'll stick with the police department. So, they, we actually made a part-time offer. Uh, there's an officer who's still in the academy, uh, so they don't quite meet the qualifications of a full-time officer. But we were excited about him and decided to give him a part-time offer contingent upon them getting through the academy and all that, so hopefully, uh, they accept that. And there's one other full-time open, um, I know there's at least one person they're, they're feeling pretty positive about, so hopefully, by the end of the week, they'll have made that offer as well. Fire Department, the two offers were made and accepted, uh, so now we're up to eight full-time. Chief Lawson will be here, uh, at the April fourth meeting to swear them in, to meet the new two full-timers. Um, next week, we'll hopefully submit the Safer Grant, um, I forget how much that's for. I think it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, the worth of payroll that they can cover for the Fire Department. That'll get submitted next week, hopefully, uh, you know, fingers crossed on that one. Um, just quick update on Clovernook, that letter to the, from the county, uh, got sent. Um, there's one particular individual, we've got some eviction paperwork in for, so, I mean, there are small things happening with Clovernook, but the big things will be getting these housing councils together, getting our housing official, Gordon Wong, out there to actually do inspections, um, and just kind of being more active in that area. Uh, I want to do a quick update on the hoax active shooter that happened on Wednesday. I think we released something on Facebook, so I, I think the details are already out, there's not too much more to add, but the eight departments, our acting chief, Nolte, will send a commendation to all of those officers who participated. He told me this morning, he felt everything went great, uh, the school actually did a very great job. The system that they had of connecting the students with the parents, he said, went great. Uh, just the way they had everything lined up, they used Hilltop Plaza as a staging area, just, you know, they'll create an after-action report this week just to see if there's anything else that maybe could be improved upon, but, you know, frustrating that it happened, but seemed like the police and the school, everybody handled it the way that they should've, so thankful for that. Um, let's see, Chief Nolte told me May eighteenth will be our open house for the police and fire, kind of like the National Night Out, it's typically in August, but we have done ours in May. So, May eighteenth, we'll have all the equipment out, Perry will be closed down, so you can see the cruisers, the fire trucks, all that stuff. You got this in your packet, uh, says CLG. These are just some classes you guys can take, I mean, it's for elected officials, I think anybody could really take it and probably benefit from it. It's fifteen bucks, it's around the lunch hour, if you want to take it, it's a Zoom meeting. I think today's actually the deadline, and it's gonna occur next week, but if you let me know this evening or tomorrow, if you want to take it, again, it's just a Zoom call, uh, city will pay for it, it's fifteen bucks. Just let me know. I think that's all I had. Any questions?
Questions, anybody?
Oh, yeah. The May eighteenth, um, what, do you have the times for that?
I do not.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, we got a while. Yeah, we've just, we've only just set the date, so we've not really done much planning beyond that, it's a Thursday. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what it is, I'll, I'll confirm all that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Public Works Director, Justin.
How's it going?
Real good, bud.
Good. So, um, in reference to the potholes, uh, we've actually had a pretty hard time getting hot blacktop this year. Used to be where we'd go down to Merrington Way, sit for a couple hours, get a load of blacktop, come back, while that blacktop plant's closed and gone. So, the closest plant that's open right now is in Franklin, Ohio. And it's almost a two-hour round trip, so.
Cold blacktop when you get back, isn't it?
What's that, yes?
Cold blacktop when you get back.
Yes, and cold blacktop is hard blacktop, and it's very hard to shovel, move, pack. So, uh, our only other option would be to buy bags of cold patch from like Home Depot. So, one whole skid of cold patch, it's sixty-two bags, it's fifty-pound bags, about thirty-one hundred pounds. It's about eleven hundred dollars for a ton and a half of blacktop. Or, the hot mix is, uh, you can get two tons for three hundred dollars. So, that's kind of the, our, our two options. So, we've been trying to, uh, take advantage of the nicer weather, uh, and doing potholes, but it's few and far between. So, that's, that's our, uh, it's our issue with the potholes this year. Last year, we had that issue because you just go downtown, you get it, you're back in, you know, most of your time is waiting in line to get blacktop, then you got a twenty-minute drive back. So, that's a huge difference. So, um, other than that, the guys have been busy trying to clean up some of the landscaping around town, we've taken down, uh, dead trees in the park, uh, under, over, like, overhanging the, the walking trail, there were two dead trees, we took those down. There's some fence issues that we need to address in the park, we've been working on that. I've been busy in the office trying to figure out, uh, according to the Hamilton, Hamilton County Stormwater Association, they want to know, every year, we have to fill out a report, and that includes things like how many tons of salt we used over the summer, over the winter, uh, what kind of, you know, liquid stuff we use to fight salt or the snow. They want to know how many gallons of pesticides or herbicides we spray. And now, they want to know how much debris we clean out of our storm drain inlets. So, uh, had to come up with the, a program for that, we have to, in the course of five years, we, they want us to cycle through every single storm drain inlet in town. So, just on the streets alone, there's only four hundred and sixty-five of them. So, cleaning them out, we'd be also inspecting them, once we inspect them, we have to make a list of things that need to be repaired or even replaced, so, um, that's been, uh, an interesting task. So, um, we're gonna be busy. I know that, you know, four hundred and sixty-five of them is about a hundred a year. So, if you're shoveling them out by hand, or you could use a vacuum truck, so, we'll try to figure out the most efficient way to handle that. So, let's see here. I guess some of you have probably noticed that there's orange, um, fencing around the playset. Our insurance risk assessment, uh, uh, inspector guy came through and took a look at the playset, deemed it was really not that safe for use. So, I got with Keisha, and, uh, we've both felt it was best to close the playset. And we're kind of waiting on a group decision on whether or not to completely remove the playset. That way, nobody goes through the yellow, or the orange fence and plays on the playset. So, um, this guy sent out, what, forty-one pages? Forty-one-page report on his findings, and I think thirty-eight of those pages were about the playsets, so. Uh, we felt that just for safety, better safe than sorry, to close it. And then, one last thing, um, I spoke with a gentleman from Hamilton County about getting the roads striped. Last year, apparently, they couldn't get any paint, so it wasn't done. So, this year, they're hoping to get paint, and, uh, he still doesn't have an answer whether or not they're gonna get paint or not, so, um, with all the, I wouldn't say all the streets being replaced, but as the streets get replaced, they're putting down a thing called, a product called thermoplastic, it lasts much longer than paint. So, we have less and less roads that need to be striped. So, if I don't hear anything back from the county, then I'll have to try a private contractor, um, which could cost even more. So, uh, but he didn't even want to give me a quote on the price for the striping, because he doesn't even know if he can get paint. So, other than that.
Pretty optimistic.
Yeah. Yeah, um, it's been great, great first few months on the job here. Which brings us to, um, uh, a phone call received Friday about the leaking roof at Coverbridge Antique Mall. Apparently, it's been leaking for years, and I called a roofer to come look at the roof, and pretty much says it needs a whole new roof. So, um, he doesn't have an exact dollar amount, but, uh, it's looking like it's gonna be rather big. And, um, this is the first of three estimates I'm waiting on, this guy just showed up today, so we'll wait and see what kind of number this guy comes back with.
Justin, does that roof need just shingles and buildup roofing, or are we talking structural problems?
There's actually four different roofs up there. Uh, the shingle roof up front needs to be, um, torn off, and they'll inspect for structural damage there. The box gutters up front are not functioning properly. Uh, the siding on the sides of the building, on the roof side, is actually shingles, which also need to be replaced, but roofing companies aren't gonna put shingles on the side of a building. They're just, like I said, that, that's not how they do things, so that would have to be sided. Some of those shingles are missing, so water could be running in down the walls that way and causing leaks. The, I believe, if I'm mistaken, the building was built in nineteen hundred, and it's been added on to quite a few times. So, you've got different levels trying to drain on the other levels, and then you got steps up and flat roofs and, uh, just all kinds of stuff.
Yes, understand.
It's been patched and patched and patched over the years, and, um, it's time to start over with a new roof. So, yeah, just, um, it's time.
Okay, uh, let's take a step back, I have another question regarding Hamilton Avenue.
Sure.
They painted stripes on it.
Temporary, yes.
They rewinding it up last fall, is that set to be the plastic, whatever, is that, is that one on the spring?
So, the last time I spoke with Karen McClure from the State of Ohio, there, they had some issues with the blacktop. I don't know if you know, so they basically did three passes up and down the, the road when they paved it. And when those passes join together, they're basically seams or joints, they're not, they're supposed to be smooth, you're not even supposed to know that they're there, but you know that they're there. There's quite a big gap. Uh, they brought up some, um, some like grouping, so that where the, the asphalt didn't mix right from the plant, so there's some bigger rocks that are kind of grouped together along, it didn't get enough sand. There's just, there's a few issues that need to be addressed before they permanently stripe Hamilton Avenue. So, but right now, all the blacktop crews are laid off, so.
Right.
April, May is when the blacktop plants open back up, so somewhere around there, we'll.
Say, we'll see what we can get out of that then, huh?
Yeah.
What they'll do to the.
So, um, yeah, I'm assuming they'll come back in, grind and overlay.
I don't know what, so, if you travel up and down maybe seventy-five, north of two seventy-five, you notice how you got nice, smooth, brand-new blacktop, and then it kind of turns gray?
Yes, I do.
Right, so what they've done there is they brought a mill in to kind of smooth it out. So, I'm thinking that might be what they're thinking, I'm not sure how that works, but, um, it's, uh, we'll have to wait and see.
So, this was a State of Ohio job?
Yes.
So, I mean, they're aware of it?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, all right.
I brought it to their attention, and they were already fully aware.
Okay.
So, I mean, there were some issues with water gathering at crosswalks that it wasn't normally gathering at, that was been, that's been brought up, it's just.
Okay.
Yeah, another fun one.
It's a great job, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Anything else, Justin?
Uh, that's all I've got for now.
More bad news?
Brush out. Oh, we did find some free sidewalk today. We did, uh, some edging over there, um, by the playground, where you walk from McMacklin down to the park, and we found, uh, this much overgrowth of grass, we edged it back, and we gained some free sidewalk. So, that's good, good, good news.
Really not free, it's been there. All right. Okay, moving on then to ordinances and resolutions. We have, how many ordinances? One ordinance, two resolutions, is that right? Two ordinances, one resolution. Okay. Start with our ordinances first. Ordinance number twenty-three dash two zero one one. Twenty-three dash two zero one one, an ordinance to decertify assessment to the county auditor for placement of their tax duplicate and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, the parcel number on the second page, I think in the original, it said two six eight, and it should have been two six nine, something like that. So, we were, we were, we were off a number, and we assessed the wrong parcel, so this is just undoing that.
And this is an emergency, so it can go onto the June tax bill, or come over the June tax bill.
I make a motion to suspend the two reading rule.
Second.
Mr. Parsons has made a motion to suspend the two reading rule, Mr. Redding is seconded. Are there any other questions? I guess I'm not allowed to answer that now that we've done that, huh? Does everybody understand what, uh, uh, Mr. Bauer said, and what this is about? No questions or comments? Okay. Roll call on the suspension.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of six-zero, the two reading rule's been suspended. Any other questions in regard to what this is about, just correcting a parcel number?
So, we can get them, get them billed for the work?
Yes, yes.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three dash two zero one one.
Okay, Mr. Redding has made a motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Rissel is seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of six-zero, ordinance number twenty-three dash two zero one one is adopted. Next one. Ordinance number twenty-three dash two zero one two. An ordinance assessing cost of the removal of litter, rubbish, and garbage and declaring an emergency.
So, I believe both of these were picking up furniture, Justin, you don't have to remember these, do you? Nineteen fifty-eight Stevens and seventy-three forty Park, a couch and a sectional, I think, is what it was. So, crews just went out to pick up furniture that had been sitting out on the curb for too long, basically.
Is this on a corner, and the two houses, I mean, are the houses next to each other or something?
Seen it?
Could be.
Yeah. Cross each other.
Nineteen fifty-eight Stevens?
Nineteen fifty-eight.
Okay, questions or comments, counsel? This has been asked to be an emergency, takes effect, do you want it passed tonight, though?
I make a motion to suspend the two reading rule.
Mr. Redding has made a motion to suspend.
I'll second it.
Mr. George, seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Uh, vote, vote is six-zero, two reading rules been suspended. Any other questions or comments regarding this ordinance?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three twenty twelve, please.
Okay, Ms. Lingo has made a motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
Mr. Young is seconded. Roll call.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Okay, by, did I hear Mrs. Rissel? Okay, thank you. Soft. By a vote of six, zero, ordinance number twenty-three dash two zero one two is approved. Then we have one resolution, resolution twenty-three dash one two zero one. Resolution of necessity for levying a tax exceeding ten mil limitation for police services.
Keep you on your toes, it's one resolution, but there's two copies and there's like three words that are different between the two. So you get to pick which one you want to pass. They're both for police services and the same millage. Uh, the only difference is one is a five-year, uh, every five years it would need to be renewed. The other is a continuing, so it would stay. Previously, the, this particular one that failed, it was for general fund usage or general fund, um, funds that would come in. If it's only for general funds, that's why it has to be a five-year, but if it is attached to a particular per, purpose, like police services, that's when you can do the continuing, so that's why there's a difference. So if you choose, you can do the five years, uh, renewal or the continuing. And again, this is just the first step. This would then be sent to the county to be certified. They would tell us how much money the millage would be worth. Then we would have to do a second piece of legislation that would actually put it on the ballot for November. So this is just the first step to do it.
The difference between the two, actually, if we get a continuing resol, a continuing levy, we don't need to worry every five years about it passing. If we, it could fail and then we would lose the money that we had been getting. On the other hand, with a five-year, every five years when we go to renew it, they redo the certification of how much we can get and it usually goes up because property values have gone up, so.
I'm not sure if it's, I think we would still get the same revenues, the millage would just go down. I think that's how, if it was a true renewal. So in other words.
You'd have to recertify.
I'm trying to remember that. I think, I think on renewals, we don't, it's, it stays the same.
Well, then there's no advantage to do the five-year. Continuing would be better because we would never have to renew it.
That might be something we want to ask about, though, I mean, just.
We're going to do two readings on it.
So, okay.
We still got to pick one before we do the reading, right?
Yeah.
Continuing?
You could do, you could do both. We just give a new, um, resolution number. Because all, I mean, you could have a hundred of these if you wanted. It's that final one that you actually pass to send to the ballot that matters.
Yes, we can do a first reading on both, yeah.
So we would need a new number, I guess keep twelve oh one for, the one that's in your packet is the five-year. And then we would need a new number for the second one, which was placed on your desk, which is the continuing, if that's how you want to do it.
Counsel, stop. You both have them tonight?
Every twenty-three twelve oh two.
It's probably you again.
Probably, he was.
Okay, everybody's in agreement, we're going to read both of them tonight, first reading. And which one is twelve oh two?
Continuing.
Continuing. You've got to speak louder for my deaf ears, dear.
If you look on the second page, in the second paragraph, near the end, it says will last for a continuing period of time. That's the continuing one.
That's twelve oh two.
Yeah.
It's in item three on the second page.
Okay. First reading, counsel, we're all in agreement of that?
Yes.
Okay. Old business, counsel.
Just one thing concerning the work at the Wetlands this weekend. Just would like to quickly read off the names of the folks that, uh, came out and helped. It was Renee Gilbert, Alex Kescak, Eric Tobin, Eli Lutz, Cordell, George, uh, Cassie Rice, Amy Gable, Jeff Kentrop, Lisa Hagland, William Smith, Karen Arnett, Judy Harmon, Nathaniel Timmerman, Julian Gentry, Ian Macavany, I think, Macavinci, and Aaron Horsley. And again, some of these folks are not from the city of Mount Healthy, they just like to come out and do this kind of work, so greatly appreciate their, all their work, really do.
Absolutely.
And I failed to mention too, uh, WVXU was out there, did some interviews, so, um, yeah, appreciate drawing more attention to it, so. Thank you, Mr. Redding. That's all I had.
Just to backtrack for one second, so the levy, I'm going to confirm how the amount is recalculated basically each year and how much property values move with the millage or with the.
With the renewal?
How much the levy.
If it renewed, if it, if it changed.
So just confirm how all that's calculated is what, okay.
Right, because I think there's a difference between, so some folks, some cities will do a renewal, some will do a replacement with the same one point five four mil, which will get you more dollars, so that's, so there's a difference between a renewal and a replacement.
Sure, okay.
Uh, that's what I think I'm remembering, so.
Yep.
Okay, old business.
I got one thing, on the last meeting, I, on the, uh, Business Association, I failed to mention that the, uh, Business Association is donating two hundred dollars to Reebok Cine a month to help with their rent. So that was kind of big, I apologize for missing that, but that was a big deal, so that was a, that was a, so I apologize to the association for missing that last meeting, but it had on my list there and I just skipped right over top of it, so. But that was, that was a good deal for them, just want to mention it.
Hey, thank you, Paul. Is there any other old business?
We need to talk about appointment to the CRA, so counsel needs to pick two people.
Do they have to be from counsel?
No. Be from anywhere. Counsel just has to pick two. I have to pick two and you all have to pick two.
You say tonight or next, by next meeting?
Uh, next meeting.
Next meeting.
Want to be picked?
Anybody?
So there's five, is it five total?
Yes.
That, between the mayor and the city, it's five. And then those five will pick another two.
For the tax.
Tax part, right.
For, no, for the council. There's seven total.
Oh, right, right, sorry.
Yeah. It's two from the mayor, two from the city, one from planning commission. And that's how Jamie got selected, so we need four more, and then those five will convene and pick two more. Yeah.
Can you make this more difficult?
I know, right?
Okay, so what do we do with that? We see what we can come up with for next meeting?
I, I will make it easy. I would love to volunteer to be on that council. If that is okay with everybody else.
You're volunteering, you think it's all right, not all right?
Talk about it at the next meeting, I'll throw my name out there.
Can you find another sucker?
Well, I know a guy that donates a lot, de, works very hard for the city and a lot of people don't realize it and he's here tonight, Mr. Bittner. And I'm not kidding about working hard for the city.
You, you, I walked right into that, didn't I?
Does a lot of free work for the city, yes.
Walked right into that. Alright.
Does that mean you're volunteering too?
That means I'll give it a, I'll give it a try, you and me, Joe. There you go, mayor. Joe and I just volunteered.
Counsel would need.
With counsel's approval.
Or I need to make a motion.
Don't approve this, wipe it out.
That's what you want. Should we do it at the next meeting?
Think about it.
Yeah.
Maybe somebody else you like better.
Let's hope so.
Yeah.
We'll vote on it next time.
Yeah, we'll vote on it next.
Okay.
I have their names down in caps.
Is there any other old business? Is Perry and Compton old business or new business?
Guess it's old business.
We really need to sit down, have a work session on it.
Yeah. When did, when did we start? When did the cones go out? We said thirty days, right?
Been.
Yeah.
Was it just the last one? Okay, the twenty-first?
Been four weeks. Been a month. Yeah, it's been a month.
It's been a month.
It's been a month.
Yeah, it was two meetings ago.
So we can schedule a work session for the twenty-first. I can get the, uh, traffic data from PD and, uh, just kind of look and see.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So we're removing the cones after this meeting? It's been a month?
Or do we want to extend it another thirty? I don't know.
So I, I do have a question for the pastor, though, because this, this concerns me. What, when are your services? I'm not familiar with.
Absolutely, so, uh, Sunday services, we actually give it about like nine thirty. Serve, I can start to let everybody do a class if you need to, a couple of, uh, before then and some, some things to get out of the group and before them. So, Sunday is maybe about nine thirty till about one thirty, which we're actually completely out. Uh, we also, we have a night in ladies, we have private study and prayer, so it has been on the zoom, so that's a good place. And that's on, on Tuesday, um, and Thursday at seven P M. Normally that's kind of pushed back closer to the summertime, once snow and all that is out and safety is available. So, right now, making sure between about nine thirty and five thirty on Sunday.
Okay, a, and I'm not remembering, is there, uh, handicap parking out in front of the church?
Well, we do have the handicap sign that we put out there during the morning times going on Sunday, but there's not necessarily any.
Oh, okay, okay, so we don't have a designated handicap signs.
There one on Perry.
I think there's one on Perry.
There is one on Perry.
There's one on Perry, okay.
But not by, not by.
Compton, okay.
You think it should be.
That, that's my, my biggest concern throughout all, all of this, is making sure that folks can get in that need to get in, so.
We'll get some information out of it. We've had enough people up here to complain about it. You know, I really think we need to discuss these, uh, speed bumps and traffic, what's the term, traffic, uh? Calm. We'll have to have a work session on that, though. No, work sessions open.
Yeah, you can come.
Open to the public.
Yeah.
Well, we'll try to set a meeting, work sessions are, would follow the next council meeting?
Yeah, is that what we want to do? Go ahead and, and we can put on the agenda now for the, so the twenty-first, just directly after council.
Yeah, next council meeting is the twenty-first and we'll have a work session following council. Now, whether council goes for forty minutes, an hour, you know, I don't know. Uh, do you think we should remove the cones at this time, then? Who asked that question, the mayor?
I did. We just originally said thirty days.
I think, I think so.
I think so.
Counsel pretty much agrees to remove the cones, Justin. Well, it might not have worked well, but we tried something, it's, you know, it's, it's live and learn.
Yeah, our hands are kind of tied on this one.
I'm positive, though, there's no accidents there.
Right, well, we'll have to find that out and, so, we've got to come up with another solution that we don't lose the parking spots.
Let's, I'll make a recommendation, let's do the work session after the first April meeting and see what happens between now and then on the police department, since we've taken the cones away.
Okay.
Good idea.
Two, four weeks without them, or with them and four weeks without them, see if there's a change.
Good idea.
Good idea.
We usually do work sessions the first meeting of the month, anyway.
True.
So then April fourth, directly after council?
Okay. Did you get that, doctor?
Yes, sir.
So the work session will be on the fourth of April. Okay, uh, any other old business, counsel? How about new business, um, Ms. Lingo?
No, I don't have any.
I'm sorry.
I don't, I'm good.
Okay, new business.
Just, I think this falls under new business, so, um, a few weeks ago, I guess the, the day after the last council meeting, I attended, uh, a Metro, uh, workshop concerning rapid transit. I think I brought this up a couple of council meeting ago, so, um, anyway, in talking with the folks from Sorda and Metro, they did not have a contact for, uh, Mountain, city of Mount Healthy and, uh, I volunteered, so, uh, they.
You could be in this one.
It's good to be retired, um, so with regards to that, I think I brought this up to, Hamilton Avenue and Redding Road were the two corridors that were first picked to do the study. They're starting, they will be starting into their first part of the study, which allows them to ask for ten percent of a grant, uh, to do their initial studies and, and they will be starting that. So just wanted to update everybody on that, it's not really part of a committee meeting or any, or committee, so, um, anyway, just, I'll keep you abreast of that. Execution for the project and, oh, the in-service date for the project is, will be in twenty twenty-seven, so we have some time and, and, uh, but, you know, it seems like they have a very good plan and, and they're, they're work aggressively working on, uh, getting rapid transit, which, which means that from downtown to the city of Mount Healthy and points in between, they're, they're going to figure out ways to get the buses to move quicker, to get you that, those twelve miles for Hamilton, for the Hamilton Avenue corridor, to get you from A to B that much quicker. So, and then it will be a new bus, I believe they said, it was the old number five, I think, they, they brought that up too, so. Quite interesting, but.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any other new business?
I think we, the, uh, with Hilltop, or not Hilltop, the Antique Mall, the, uh, economic meet, business, um, yeah, easy for me to say, to schedule a meeting to go over the roofing and things like that, so we'll try to do that, maybe around six fifteen on the, uh, day, before the next council meeting. Uh, just up here in council, I guess.
Who's on that committee with you?
Myself, yeah, I think myself, Joe and Bob.
Okay.
That works for you guys.
It's March twenty-one.
Twenty-one, you were gone, right?
Six fifteen.
I'll, I'll be here. You're here. I thought, I was thinking you were gone that date, so, sorry. Okay. I'll be here. Okay.
So before the meeting?
Before, yeah.
Six o'clock?
Six, yeah, six fifteen or so.
Six fifteen, okay.
Mr. Bauer, can you stay in contact with, uh, uh, what's your name again, Starwurfs?
Yep, I'll give U D F a call. Yep, no problem.
And, uh, stay in contact with him and, and appreciate it. Yeah. Okay, any other new business, counsel?
President, can I make one comment?
Yes.
About to, uh, truly, truly from out of heart, uh, I really appreciate you guys taking the time. I only hear us, but listen, but there is a, a difference. So, um, truly, truly appreciated and I truly appreciate just even the comments, uh, people like you and not just data. Uh, thank you, mayor, even bringing it back, so please, those are heartfelt and it's really, you know.
Thank you very much, that's very, very nice. Yes. How about you guys? What, what do we need to do? There was a Perry Street yet, was, was your?
Southampton.
Southampton.
Southampton, the, Southampton.
Need some blacktop.
As soon as we can get the, uh, rose green surface, that would be fantastic.
Oh, yeah.
Been waiting twenty-seven years.
Yeah, they just did Elizabeth Street by me a few years ago and.
The street got done?
Yeah, and, um, the Cincinnati, we're on Cincinnati. Yeah, and, um, the Cincinnati, uh, Cincinnati, Duke Energy's cutting about six holes right there in front of my place. So it'll be, they've ruined a good street.
For what it's worth, they're already wanting to dig up Hamilton Avenue, Duke Energy is.
Oh, great.
I told them no. Why don't you just let us get the, the final striping on it first? Give it a couple of years, maybe?
Yeah.
Doesn't have its final coat on yet.
Yeah, do it before you get the final coat. Yeah.
Why don't we think on, uh, Southampton and all the curves are gone?
Yeah, that'd be part of the rebuild.
Yeah, so when that one goes out the bid, that's going to be.
That'll be rebuilt, let me tell you the frustrating part, and it's very frustrating to me. If we decide tonight we're going to do your street next and put it in, we put in to bid to get money from the, from the state. If it got approved, it would be approved October, November of this year. The money wouldn't be available until at least next summer, so it would be at least two to three years before this gets done. It just takes forever. Sorry.
Yeah, because we, we put money, with our engineering company, we put money, uh, into the state, tell them that we can pay twenty percent or twenty-five percent or whatever, and they'll pay the rest of it. It's the only way we can afford to do the street. Because streets take almost a million dollars to do and we get a, we have a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar.
Right, right about there, about a hundred and fifteen in a street levy.
Yeah, in a street levy, so all we can do is bargain that against larger sums from the state. So it's, it's tough and we can't do streets by ourselves, really, so.
You know, there's, there's actually streets in town that have actually technically never been paved. It's just been tarred and chipped its whole existence, so blocks of.
Yeah.
Joseph out here in front of Assumption, Hickman, never been paved, it's all tarred and chipped.
Yeah. Okay, any other new business, council?
Well, yes, so what was going on on Elizabeth Street is they had gas or water in the gas mains. So obviously, there was a leak.
Yeah, obviously. Okay, any other new business? Ms. Lingo?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Lingo has made a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Ms. Rissel, seconded, all those favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.